All right, good evening and welcome to Evolith City Council Meeting for February 4th, 2025, 2 o'clock in the Evolith Council Chambers here in Evolith. I bring this meeting to order. May I get a call to order, please? Jackie?
Yes, Councillor Rowsey.
Here.
Councillor Koyvenen.
Here.
Councillor Purpich.
Here.
Councillor Lilis.
Here.
Mayor Rowan.
Here. Wonderful, thank you. We'll do approval of the minutes. Minutes for the City Council Meeting for January 21st of 2025. Somebody would make a motion to move on that?
So move.
Move Rowsey, second.
Support.
Support with Lilis. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes for the City Council Workshop held on January 22nd of 2025. Motion to move?
So move.
Second?
Support.
Purpich, Koyvenen, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval for our agenda tonight. Does anybody have any agenda items that they'd like to add to the list? Anyone at the table? Jackie, do you have something?
Yes, please, Mayor. So at the last regular City Council meeting, you folks approved that draft agreement between Mindot, St. Louis County, Evolith and Virginia for the work that's going to be done this summer. And I got the final version of it and was reminded that we have to send an approved resolution along with it. So Stephanie's handed out for all of you a draft resolution that I would need approval.
Okay, so we'll add that agenda item to J10. That works for everybody?
Mayor, point of order, you might want to put it before the closed session.
Yeah.
We can do that and then go into the closed session after that.
For the closed session?
Should move nine to 10 and put that as number nine.
I got you, yes. Substitute that, make that number nine and the closed session, number 10, please. Thank you very much for that. All right, accepting of the agenda with the changes that we've made, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful.
Mayor, excuse me, I need a motion.
Well, a motion for that too. Okay, we'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
By Rowsey, second?
Support.
Support. And do we have any discussion on that further? No, all in favor then, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're good to move forward, thank you. We'll open it up to the public if there is anybody in the public that would like to make any comments. We have a three minute on that.
Probably Sergeant West-Evolith, I won't take three minutes, only about three seconds. I'd like to give a shout out and a kudos to Jerry Rosati. I told him just yesterday about Ruth Freyler and today it's six. Seems like Johnny on the spot. Thank you, Jerry.
Wonderful, thank you Jerry for jumping on that.
And the garbage truck.
And the garbage truck.
Oh, yeah. Well, it keeps us from having a liability claim, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
All right, we have our appointments. Can we just do this as a bulk, these two?
If you'd like.
Perfect, we will. Appointment for Luke Bjorgi to be on the Park Commission and appointment of Kathy Murphy to be on the Park Commission. Is there a motion to move?
So move.
Move by Purpich, second?
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, is there any discussion on this?
I gotta say, these people have been on the board for a long time and I appreciate them. They're always, always there, always have good things when we have, do have our meetings. Two really good people and glad to have them on board.
I'd just like to echo my thanks for your service to the city for all this time and appreciate you wanting to move forward in the same position.
It is nice to see that people are jumping on board to keep the city moving in the direction it is. And then I'll take that same moment to say this is a good time to open it up to remind other people if they have interest, please reach out to us, be a part of it, let us know what interests you so we can get you on a council, a commission, something of the sort that you can play a role. Any further discussion there? Wonderful, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right. Next setup, we have the consent for the agenda of the approval of claims for January of 2025. I think that was a very large agenda sheet that was left behind for you to review. I left mine on the office desk there, but is there any questions or anything that we need to chat about on that at all that you saw? Anything alarming? I'll be honest, as I kind of went through, there was a lot of things that were just kind of things I haven't heard about or seen about, so I was just hoping that things, if they were jumping off the plate, you gentlemen would have seen it. So, perfect. Motion to accept the approval of claims for January 2025.
So move.
Second?
Support.
Support, excuse me, move by Purpich, support by Lilis. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. A request to send an officer to out of town training. Chief, did you want to touch base on this a little bit more than what we see in our dialogue for the people at home?
Sure, so Officer Hootus has been with us for almost three years now. He's been training private last year quite a bit with Sergeant Eas. He's our cannon handler. Officer Hootus has been showing some interest and maybe in the future becoming a cannon handler. This class here is where we received our dog and we're, Sergeant Eas currently is training gun and blam. So this is more for being quiet, how to take bites, lay tracks, all those things. Hopefully prepare him maybe for one day, become a future handler.
When the other officer goes on vacation, who replaces that?
Cannon handler?
Yeah.
Nobody.
Nobody. So we don't have anybody when this other officer?
That's a one man dog.
That's a one man. Definitely stays with him. So he has to take a vacation or?
Legal vacation.
They go with him or goes to next resort.
All right. I see that the cost of seminar is $400.
Yep, that comes out of our training budget.
Oh.
Our annual training budget, so.
Wonderful, right out of the budget, I love that. I love that.
He's pretty good at going. It's already in the budget statements.
Oh, he is a Dr. Jerry though.
But those.
Fair. Motion to move on having our officer go down to this two day work training?
So move.
Move by Purpich, a second?
I'll support it.
Support by Koyvenen, is there any further discussion on this at all? Wonderful. Let the, our officer know that we're, we're happy that this is something he's looking forward to doing in the future, I think it's wonderful.
We'll do that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We don't have anything under public hearing or unfinished business, which will then move us into new business. And I'll be honest, in new business, I was kind of surprised when the book was, I'll say the word thin. I, I felt like we saved quite a bit of money this month or this two weeks just in paper alone, but nonetheless, it made the reading a little bit easier this last weekend. The first one up is our final reading of an ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter 2, Section 2.02, Council Meetings, Time and Place. And this is our ordinance regarding moving our meetings to the first and third Mondays at 5:30 PM, maintaining them here in the council chambers. Is there a motion to move on this?
So move.
Move by Rowsey, is there a second?
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, is there any further discussion on it at all? Gentlemen, I thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. The consideration of approval to move forward with the Rental Housing Code and Program Development that was brought to us not that long ago, that was on the 22nd of January, was that? Is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve the Rental Housing Code and Program Development that was brought to us forward?
I'll make a motion, I'll make.
Okay, motion by Purpich, is there a second?
I'll support.
Support by Rowsey, discussion on the table?
I will be abstaining due to a potential conflict of interest.
Fair. I was not here when this Rental Housing Code was developed or presented. I did however go through it and the presentation obviously was a slideshow or a PowerPoint and I went through that and I read some of the stuff then I discussed a little bit with Brian. I, I think it's pretty good going forward, he answered a few of my questions off the book here, but I think it's a good thing for us to have this thing, we certainly do need it, if not for the welfare and safety of the people that are doing the renting.
Any further discussion? I just wanted to know, and perhaps you can answer the question then, if we move forward in accepting this, is this one where there's a second and a third as well, or is this, once it's voted in, it's in and to change something is creating an amendment through, through us, whoever wants to answer that?
Yeah, I'll take care of that. So what you're approving now is to move forward with the code and the program development, you're not adopting the code yet.
Perfect, okay.
So it needs legal review and when you adopt the code, it's going to be an introduction on the first reading, a publishing and a conspect for kind of. And then once you have a code, as you can see like we did at the meetings, you have the option, the term, once you change things as you learn things. So a lot of times we adopt code or plan or program in bulk and you, two months, two years later, you need to change something. And so we have them back in as soon as we can.
Okay. That makes me feel a lot better because as I was reading through it again after presentation, which was, like I said before, I was quite blown away by it, thank you for all that, but it was a lot of information to take in in just one or two readings to know like, oh yeah, he definitely has all this stuff right, he didn't make one mistake. So I was no nervous that if I was voting on this, that I was locking something in, so it makes me feel better knowing that we're going to be a work in progress in it. And what was our ultimate timeline again?
So the?
For, for adoption or whatever you want to call it.
Right, so the code will do legal review and if you have any comments again, pass them on to the person that drafted it, Brian Lilis, or to Joel, or to me also. And then throughout the summer and fall, the program implementation, there's a lot of steps will be developed with the hopes of having that all done by the end of the year.
Okay, so we're aiming for a 2026 start on this, the December 2025? It was kind of a date we tossed around?
Yes.
Okay, all right, perfect. So with that, is there any further discussion on it at all? All right, so consider to approve, move forward with the Rental Housing Code and Program Development, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry, thank you. Next up, number three is proposal for Northeast Technical Services for 408 Fail Road. This is for the property, obviously on 408 Fail Road in our city here for Phase 1, 2, and this is now Phase 3?
So this is to update the Phase 1 to eliminate Phase 2 and put together Response Action Plan and for them to contribute to the deed application for the cleanup site.
Do we have a motion to move on this proposal?
So move.
Move by Lilis, is there a second?
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion?
I just want to say that if anybody is wondering what this is all about, that in order for the city to gain money for the cleanup of 408, which was a filling station with oil and contaminants throughout the property, and so the city doesn't have to pick up the total charge of the cleanup, we are, we need to go through deed and the IRRB and try and get, secure these monies to help us clean up that area so we can get a viable business in there.
And this was with the May 1 deadline, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I guess the only thing that I had was, I personally don't have anything against NTS and I've sat down and talked with NTS a little bit, but how much work do we do with our local company, Environmental Service, Tom Newhitch? Is this something that is in his realm? Do we ever look to get multiple quotes on some of this stuff?
I would collect his using Tom, he does some hazardous materials inspections, I think, on buildings and that kind of thing.
Removing building dome?
Yeah.
The old, I think it was the old Monish building? Or the feed store?
Yeah.
We worked with him on that, that was put a few years ago.
Okay, he does some testing, he'll take samples of whether it be flooring or insulation around all?
Asbestos.
Furces and other things, so he's more in the testing business and stuff. The results.
He did my asbestos at the bar when it burnt and?
Sure.
And I think NTS has been involved with this particular property since 2013, I believe.
Not quite 15 years, like we discussed yesterday.
No, that was, that was a different issue.
No, and I'm, like I said again, I'm not here to say anything negative about NTS, I understand it, I was just pure curiosity, where do we stand as far as utilizing the ones within our city limits that are paying taxes and everything else, you know, do we utilize them, are we thinking about them, things like that? But if, if we do use them, that's wonderful, and if we don't use them maybe enough, as much as we should, then let's just look into that, that's all. But any further discussion on this specific proposal from Northeast Technical Services? Okay, sure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, next up is the resolution calling for a public hearing on the wastewater treatment facility plant?
Mayor, we have Tom Dyne in the audience and he'd like him to come up?
Absolutely.
Give the Reader's Digest version. Right, Tom?
Yeah, I'll make it quick.
So we'll fly it and then if somebody really wants to see the whole thing, become a city volunteer.
Thank you, Mayor, also I'm Tom Dyne with MSA, Environmental Service. And we did give a quick presentation at the workshop, we kind of represent the facility plan findings here for the full council and then we will have a public hearing that you have the resolution for. So I have Kristin Schmaltzer with me, who's hanging up, handout for you to look at and go through this. As he's doing that, the facility plan is really a 20 year plan for your wastewater treatment facility. This all process all started back in 2019 when PCA invited the city of Atlanta to say that you're getting more stringent phosphorus and mercury limits. And in 2022, you've got, you received a new permit with those new limits. The facility plan was really the first step, we did some pilot testing of different filtration and that is the key process to meeting these new low limits. Facility plan is the next step, but not only, the main purpose is to come up with the best alternative for the city to meet these new low phosphorus and mercury limits for the next 20 years and as well as to improve your facility so it provides live treatment for the next 20 years. So the facility plan, we looked at, we analyzed the data, historical data from the city, from treatment and so forth. We look at the each process, we evaluate each process and equipment and basically kind of give it a grade or an evaluation of what, how it's doing, the providing of performance, needs, will it last another 20 years? We also protect the population and we look at the flows into the plant and the flows into the plant do go up very significantly during snow melt or rain events and that's called inflow and infiltration. And for Evolith, it is considered excessive, we do get flows that are much higher than what the EPA's criteria is for, for person. And so as a result, your, the flow swimming into the plant on an average wet weather flow exceeds the plant's capacity. And it's one reason you already have equalization, basically a pond that can take that excess flow and store it until those flows go down. As we looked at the flows, it looks like we'll need to expand that equalization by about half a million of running dams. I've already hold about four and a half, so it's not a huge, so that would be part of the proposed improvements. So the different alternatives we looked at are listed here on the sheet. No action is one alternative that's required to be looked at, basically the city could say, well, we're not going to do anything, not going to take any action, even though we're getting these more stringent limits, which eventually will lead to violations, will eventually lead to fines in PCA and if neglected long enough, it can even lead to criminal prosecution. The next one we looked at would be regionalization with Virginia, that's been looked at a few times in the past in all of this area. It really is not a practical option where Virginia doesn't have the capacity to do that for its own purposes. The next one we evaluated would be to upgrade the existing wastewater facility and the other one we looked at would be to relocate the outfall to the St. Louis River. Basically, this option of relocating your outfall came up during the negotiations, if you will, with the PCA permit. And we said, well, what if we change our, where we're discharging treated water, if we go below Elbow Lake or we go to the St. Louis River, would that change the limits regularly? And it would change them, but if you just started just below Elbow Lake, your level of phosphorus you saw retreat was still much lower than you do now. So it really wasn't an advantage and that's also like a six mile course named Gettysburg. The other one was the St. Louis River, which that we would actually maintain the current phosphorus limit if we did that, but again, that's, I think it's about a 10 mile height hit on the St. Louis River at the post. And then the third or the last one we evaluated was, what if we, you know, just demo our existing facility and start over? Well, there's not a lot of physical space there on the current site, maybe that's an option, but really looking at it and evaluating on the option, obviously that will have a very huge price tag, I'll bet you clear by name probably. So the recommended alternative, based on present worth cost evaluation, and also, we also look at non-monetary factors such as how easy is what we're proposing, is it to expand, how easy is it to operate, to maintain, excuse me, different things like that. So the recommended alternative is to improve your existing facility. It provides a fairly reliable treatment, it does meet the limits. Say occasionally you get a very high rain event or that does cause some problems, but increased EQ will, will alleviate some of that. And so what you see on this colored sheet here is really the proposed project and the improvements that were to be proposed as part of the recommended improvement. First one's to replace the influence screen, it's quite old, it's 30 years old and it's been rehabbed before. Improve flow control, currently that flow control when the high water comes in, you can split off some of the flow, that doesn't work as it should, doesn't work automatically. Replacing the aeration system in the back of the plant with the blowers and the diffusers. Currently you only have one clarifier. We would convert that existing EQ tank that's there in the picture to a clarifier. That EQ tank only holds about $200 gallons, so it's not a big factor, it's hard to overall EQ volume. And then right now, your operator really has trouble coming springtime, sorry, storing solids and that's sort of showing in a proposed select storage chain, increase that volume of select storage that you were around. And then the key part is replacing the filters, we did look at five different options regarding filtration, one being, well, why can't we just replace the media that's already in these filters? And the manufacturer said, in order to meet these more stringent limits, they want a deeper filter bed, which means the filter would be another five ton, would not fit the bit in the filter. So we looked at other types of filters that are more compact and most of the type that were pilot tested at the plant and each of those were found that they could meet these new stringent limits. So those would be the types of filters that would be proposed. And then the last dynamic we're showing here is to convert your disinfection system from the chlorine that you use to UV disinfection. That would get rid of both the chlorine gas and the sulfur dioxide gas that are both toxic gases under storage. So convert that over to UV disinfection, which is literally bulbs that are submerged from the wastewater and as it flows by, it physically kills the bacteria. That's really the recommended project. Any questions on that? And I do have other copies of the facility plan on the ground and also Gary has the mock copy.
I did have one question I thought about after the work meeting we had. The situation that happened in Virginia this last June where the system got backlog more or less and people's basements filled up with feet of water, does what we're doing here help eliminate any of those types of things from possibly happening or is that a typically completely different subject?
Well, potentially adding more EQ means the system, the plant can take in more water, but I think what also happens when you get those types of extreme events of the collection system is what can handle it. And so you actually get wastewater overflowing manholes and that and that's, of course, is a factor in people's basements.
So by making that expand EQ pond, would that help with that or is that something different?
It'll, it'll help slightly, but it won't alleviate that problem where you've got so much water coming down the pipe, pipe literally can't handle.
Understood. Understood.
More out hidden reflections.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So for the recommended alternative, the current estimated project costs $12.6 million and of course, the question always is, well, how are we going to pay for that? Our current rates are already right up to that affordability index, that funding agency dues, so MSA has a full funding team and a couple of the items that we definitely know as far as grants that we will qualify for are what's called the Point Source Implementation Grant. That's a grant that's jointly kind of regulated by the PCA and PFA. Whenever you get a more stringent limit, you automatically qualify that and it pays for 80, up to 80% of the cost of anything that's directly related to meeting them. The vast majority of the items were recommending for improvement are to meet them. And that grant caps at $7 million. Another grant for what they call principal forgiveness, the city will qualify for simply based on that 1.4% of the annual household income. The current rates are right at that level, so anything, any additional debt service and cost of the city will push that up and over that affordability index. And in addition to principal forgiveness, there's what's called Water Infrastructure Fund Grants and that's just another grant source that the PFA has. And again, that's tied directly to that 1.4% of the annual household income. Another source would be IRRB grants and then also the bond and bill which Gary and I discussed about. MSA will provide information to the city lobbyists and that will get that followed and that possible. Any questions on the facility plan and that? We still, you know, as, there are questions going forward as you read through it, I'll please pass those on, I'd be happy to respond to those. You can still make edits to the plan, help them go to public hearings.
I guess I have a question on, if, and hopefully we do get this, the bonding and all the monies that we require, we go forward with this project, once it does start and you start doing all this stuff, what happens during the construction progress process when we're still, we're still a community and when, where does all the material go while you're doing all this other stuff?
The wastewater? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's always one of the, the big things for us to figure out is the plant has to remain operational during construction, so say replacing the builder, you've got to keep at least two of them in operation while we're putting in new ones. That's a great. That's a great question, but it's always kind of a puzzle for us to figure out. But, you know, it could take, sometimes the contractor has to bypass around something in order to replace equipment. So in this case, like, we're building a second clarifier. We'd get that done and in operation before we would take out the other one, other service to look at it and tow it. Yeah, that's always, like I say, a little bit of a puzzle to figure out. Sometimes we'll actually consult contractors on, well, what do you think, how, you know, to do this so we can get that into our plan.
Okay.
He said this is his thing. His whole life, this has been his thing. Wastewater, he told us that. This is, this is his jam, so.
Been doing it for 35 years.
35 years.
Got a lot of gray hairs from it, but I do, I hope. And then right at the bottom of the handout is the schedule going forward, the public hearing is scheduled for December 4th. I believe that's a resolution, and I think that'll be at the auditorium. And then shortly after that, our deadline is to submit the plan to PCA on the 28th. All we have to do is put in the draft minutes for the facility plan and a bunch of forms that go with it, and then that'll be submitted to the PCA. The latest we really need, we'll start design as 2026. We'll see, once we submit this, plan will also submit an application to be listed on the funding list, and that will really start, paint the picture of where do we rank versus all the other projects, what kind of grant money, are we going to be able to qualify for on that? In the next few months, that'll start to become clear as far as where we rank on the plan. And then we really need to start construction in spring of 2027, and that will allow two full construction seasons, so we can finish and get the system, new system operating in fall of 2028. And we have to meet the limit by March of 2029. That gives us a few months, construction's complete to actually operate, work out any bugs before we actually have to meet that. Any other questions? And at the facility plan, we'll have a power plant, we'll go through the plan in detail to show the impact rates.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of the project. I just hope that your timeline is right where it's supposed to be. And as construction and stuff, I know there's a town to the east of us here that had a water, wastewater treatment plant that went quite long. I mean, it was, seemed like there was always something going on, so let's, let's get it right, get the right people building it and get it done.
Anybody else have any further questions at all? Thank you for your time, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
With that being said, that leads us to the resolution calling for a public hearing on the wastewater treatment facility plan, like noted, February 24th, 5:30 PM at the city auditorium, 421 Jackson Street here in Evolent. Is there a motion to move on that meeting?
Show vote.
Moved by Rousey, second.
Support.
Support with purpose. Any further discussion on this at all? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful. Do we please get that then noted for the public so that they're aware of what we're doing and where we're doing it, Jackie? I would greatly appreciate it. All right, next up is request from the police chief, he's a busy guy now today two times, to sell abandoned and city-owned property. When I was reading through this, it sounds like you've been sitting on this for a while, playing with them a little bit, or?
Yeah, no, it was three of them, they've had for quite some time, I think 2013 is the version we got, and 2017.
Correct. Okay.
Yep, so we have no need for it, that's stuff that we've come, some of the calls, abandoned property, behind somebody's garage, we found one of them, one of the bottles in his yard, they're not registered to anybody, nothing we can do, so.
Fair enough.
And a small utility trailer that's on there, that's the one that we got from Lotus Ford, and we bought the K-9 squad a couple of years ago. So that's not a trailer, that came with that, and we've never used them, currently have no use for it, so, no value to us.
Okay, so this is where I'll ask the questions then to you, Jackie. When we sell this stuff, the money always goes into the general fund? Has it ever been any other way? Has it always gone to the general fund?
Well, so the police department is a general fund department.
Okay.
So the money just historically has gone there. We had a, like, there's a donation for police for K-9, but we have other funds where we can earmark things, so also the sochi, since they gave the money, we can give them their left set of the site for, I don't know, vehicle replacement, we can go there.
I think there might be a distinction between excess property and forfeited property. Forfeited property, the laws would require that the funds be dedicated to the police department for their purposes.
Okay.
This is surplus property, so that would be a little different animal.
Sure.
And we would just market it to the general fund.
Okay. And are we going to use Tubular Suction, or is that just a suggestion in there?
Correct, that's who we'll be using.
Okay.
That's who we're using right now. We've, thinking I got those toward the Davidsons that are for fusion.
Right.
So, yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, no motion yet.
I didn't do that?
No.
I thought you did.
Wow, I'll believe you.
I was talking.
Yeah, it's all good. Is there a move by Koivinen, second?
I'll support.
Support Lilis. Now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move this time, thank you.
Don't worry about it, Ryan. Took me a long time to get used to this.
Well, Joel isn't going to reprimand me after this one, because I'm doing it his way this time.
Love it.
Love it. There was no reprimand, just slap of the wrist. Quote for a 2025 Ford Police Interceptor. Chief, would you like to touch base on this one?
Yeah, sure. We're bidding a new squad car next year. Current two that we got, as you can see there, one's got 53,000 miles on it, and our pickup truck has 136,000 miles on it. That is a 2020. Our other main one's a 2023. So we will be due for one next year. Ford needs to order it, our Lunters, he's ordered by February 22nd. Price is $44,821. That does not include outfitting the vehicle, but we have not got that quote back yet, so I'm kind of surprised, but we're still waiting on that. And that'll probably be around $20,000 out in the car.
Who, who typically does the outfitting for you then, once you receive it?
Sure, yeah, we use EATI, E-Verdus Auto, know what, throughout the perimeter. There's another big one at the St. Claude that you can use. Those are the two primary ones. The last K-9 squad that we just received a couple of months ago, we had built on in Blaine, so, EATI or Hermatown. They're closer for us, so if we do have any issues for whatever reason, they've been nice and great to work with, so it helps a lot of people.
Wonderful, thank you, chief.
Are you sure your office isn't right next to Jerry here?
Well, and this, yeah, and this is not six figures, just.
The $44,000, we get one every two years?
Lately, it's been, since 2018, you didn't make squad cars that year, Ford didn't. You know, Lunters told me on this year, there's still no guarantee that they're going to make squad cars this year as well.
Well, my point, you know, we went to probably replace the truck out right away. And my question is to Jerry, can we use that truck at the city garage if it's probably going to have 150,000 miles by then, or not more?
It's probably in better shape than the one that we have.
Well, that's why I brought this up, because we have a couple that are really crappy, because you're not going to get nothing on trade for them. So if we can utilize them down at the city garage, I think would be a, a great suggestion or a way to go with it, because we do have a couple that are, need a truck to follow the truck to pick up the parts of the truck, so.
Sure. So chief, is, are you looking for this vehicle to not be a backup vehicle then, the truck when you take it out? Are you done with it?
The pickup truck? Yeah, we were going to keep it just in case we need to haul stuff, because we do haul decently a lot of stuff, haul bikes, but we've had these city trucks before too, we have to move them. But we are, yeah, when this one comes in, we plan to get it here by 2017.
Okay.
And, you know, just, I'm pretty sure we can check with Draw to see if we can use them or not, and, you know, I mean, that's the best way to go since it's in the fleet anyway.
So hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have a quote for you for the, all the equipment.
Kind of a silly squad car without being outfitted, but I'm feeling you there. So do we have a motion to move on, moving forward on this $44,821 for a 2025 Ford Police Interceptor squad vehicle?
So move.
Oh, we got.
We got two there, I'll go move with purpose.
Echo.
And second, support with Lilis. Any further discussion on this? Mr. Rousey, you settled on today.
If I disagree with something, you'll hear about it.
I know the rule, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, you'll also have to look at John and see if he's got chocolate up there. That's kind of tells you what kind of mood he's in.
Start head bobbing, start.
Start tossing the footsie rolls at John.
Don't worry, guys, I'm on it.
All right, next up is appointing a city council members to an ad hoc destination hat-trick committee. Essentially, committee to look over the project that we have, we won't call it just hat-trick, but a blanket, so to speak, throughout the city, an umbrella, if you will, for a project. Is there anybody that is looking to actively be a part of this committee?
What are we, basically, what are you talking about? Are you just talking about the Highway 53, and what are you talking about?
You gotta go ahead, Hippodrome, et cetera.
So we all recognize our long-steeled history of hockey, and we believe that there might be opportunities for enhanced experience for visitors and for the awareness of Evolent, not only in the state, but in the United States. So we have not only some proper Leona, but Hatrick Avenue, but we have the Hippodrome. We believe there might be some other opportunities to either sync them together, have one, two, three locations, and purely to explore what would be really viable and successful in the city of Evolent. And the good news is, this is being funded by a grant from the IRRB.
They're granting us $100,000.
So the slate is wide open as to what we could possibly do and where we might do it here in the city.
Correct, correct. Yep, thank you very much. So it'd be a committee that's going to work on the ideas, the thoughts, things that are just outside, maybe outside crazy, but things that truly are realistic ideas that we can move forward with, depending on a lot of different ideas that come forward, whether it's from the community or from that committee specifically, so. Do I need to make a motion and have a second to make a committee? Okay, then we'll start by, can I have a motion to move on making this destination hat-trick committee?
Show vote.
Moved by Lilis, second.
Support.
Support by Koivinen. Is there any further discussion, any questions at all? Is there anybody that is actively looking to be on this committee? I am going to write my name down on the top of it, as I've been involved in some things as we've kind of gotten started on it. It's not fun to sit in my own brain by myself, guys.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll volunteer.
I took the bullet last time.
I know you did.
I, I don't have that note here.
Short straw, Rousey, they call it.
I'm surprised, I'm surprised this didn't go through when I was gone.
Didn't come up, Jim, it didn't come up. Oh, it definitely would have been you. In abstention.
Do we need any more than two, or is two enough for a committee?
Well, two is enough for a committee, because otherwise we have to post notices and things like that. So this makes it really easy for us to work, you guys to work the staff.
And if you need an alternate, you know, somebody can't make it, you know what? I'll go down in case I miss a meeting and they can't give it to me.
I wrote your name down before you're done talking, so it's done. Perfect. All right, any further discussion on it at all? Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number eight, an application for exempt permit for Kromosavi Arranged Recreational Civic Center, excuse me, March 20th to 2025. This goes back to what I asked the last time, correct?
Yes, this is something that they do a lot up there. We probably get five or six a year where they have special events for fundraisers and stuff, and with that also move.
And I'll second.
Move, Koivinen, second. Rousey, any discussion? I just have a question then on it. Are we by law forced to do this on a per-occasion event, or are we allowed to umbrella it for X amount of times over the course of a year?
I'll say yes to both. So we have, this is an individual event, but let's say somebody wants to have like, maybe gravel that's seen in the past, or maybe if they calendar it and want to permit it that way, because you're having the same thing on different dates, you're going to prove it that way too. Law is made by just your approval, etc.
Okay, so the groups that are doing these repeatedly, we can put that in a verbiage for them, letting them know that, hey, if you're doing this three, four times a year, give us the dates for the three or four, and we can prove it as one?
Yes, they actually know that already. Yeah, they're, they're pretty good. They, they know, just have a good handling and, I don't know, the inroads.
Fair, they know, they just want us to talk about it, I get it, I respect that. Any further discussion on it at all? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries again. We will then substitute our new number 10. Jackie, you may have the floor for it.
Okay, thank you. So at the last regular city council meeting, Alex Parrotz was here from Mindott, and gave us an overview of regarding the projects happening this summer here. That involves St. Louis County, the state of Minnesota, Mindott City, Evolent, and City of Virginia. You guys gave approval to this contract, and now I've gotten the final version from Alex at Mindott. And in addition to deciding this, they're requiring a resolution that I have drafted up for you. So that's why I asked, so I add it to the agenda, so I can just give them what they
Now, is this, so we agree with what you're doing?
Yes, so, yes, so the last meeting, you already said approve the contract, and all this resolution does is memorialize in a formal document, a resolution that you've already, that you're agreeing to approve this contract.
And this is for doing the roadwork out there, because I had a question about it, and I talked to Draw this morning about it, which I didn't realize when all this was going on, is that when they put in that ramp to go down by the Hockey Hall of Fame, there's no turnout for Evolent there. You know, they don't have it coming into Evolent, so.
No, he's talked about coming down Hatrick, getting to Park Avenue, there's going to be no entrance or.
I mean, we have thousands of cars that go down there daily and then.
Traffic going down Hatrick and Old 53.
And that kind of bugs me, because it would be nice for the businesses in town for it to come downtown, because if you remember years ago, the main street was the highway. And once you get the cars going by your business, it's up to you to get them in. So I was just trying to figure out why they couldn't, you know, we're this close, move, let's just go to Evolent. You know, I just, I'm just wondering why that hasn't been approached by us to see why or when. And I talked a little bit to Jerry, didn't dawn on me until about three days ago, and it was falling snow all night, and I was trying to think about it. And, you know, what if we do it to diligence if we weren't, didn't ask about it?
I thought the, wasn't, isn't there an exit from the roadabout?
There'll be an exit, there'll be an exit out by the bridges. That'll be your only exit out of town, besides going out towards West End for a while. You know, once they're doing, in the middle of construction, that's going to be your only.
There's only one way to town, and that's by the bridge.
On the highway, take Hatrick or 53 out of town.
I just don't want Evolent to be locked out of all the people going by.
They're doing that for safety reasons, they, they mentioned that, I mean, they brought that up quite a few times during the discussions with us. Because you're going to have such heavy traffic coming off the highway, running down Hatrick and Old 53, they can't allow cars to try to come out of Evolent and jump into, because you're going to have them coming both ways, and they're going to be faster and more, so.
So we're just talking about the temporary detour.
Yep.
Period, okay.
It was just, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't bring it up and ask, because there's business owners downtown and I don't want to detour people out of town and can't get to town if we can do something about it. You know, and not regulate anything, but, you know, only one thing into Evolent, it's not good.
No, I, I agree with you, and actually, it's crazy, times I looked at it, that never even crossed my mind, so.
I mean, either.
Saying that, but can we speak with the state, the county, whoever, can we just go out there and pound a stake in the ground ourselves and put up a temporary sign or build? a stake in the ground ourselves and put up a temporary sign or billboard that really announces the, the groups that we have, the companies, the businesses we have in town, right around that fail area telling them, you need to veer off at the, what once was bridges?
Yep.
Is there somebody that we can talk to about just trying to throw out some temporary signage to try to.
Now. I believe the state has to do that. The state has to do that, show the entrances and exits in and out of town.
And elected to be far enough down so somebody just doesn't go like this. They know they'll be stopped in Ebleth, you know, a big sign that says Ebleth now.
Yeah. I mean, never going to have to do all the signs right on.
Yeah, so in, in the temporary, temporary traffic control plan, it may not say John's drug or it may not say Snickers on the sign, but it's going to say business access and it's going to.
And that's, at least it shows that we're trying to do something.
And all this comes up from time to time. At least we can ask sometimes if there's a special circumstance or something that's maybe overlooked that they can add a, another verbiage onto a sign or an additional sign to make it more clear if there's confusion. Sometimes these, these things you don't realize until that traffic control is in place and what we're talking about is just one phase of that traffic control where they're coming through and not, you're not able to get on Park Avenue and Grant Street. That, that exposed at that stage, there'll be other stages where other accesses are impacted too of them. And they brought that stuff to the city and kind of went through it probably last summer, but always during construction, there's some change, not guaranteeing we can get some special on the side, but it's worth bringing up. There'll be meetings through this whole project that concerns our.
I think that's why I brought it up. I just want the citizens to know that we didn't forget about them or the businesses that were going to look into it because I forgot all about it, didn't even dawn on me.
I, I would appreciate if you would make that phone call and if, and if, if need be, please give me the phone number and name and I'll call them as well. And I mean, I'll ask for the moon. I'll ask for every single business to be listed in Chief Lindy's house and phone number. I'll put it all on there.
Well, you know, even churches.
Right. The churches and the line yards. And then, you know, don't ask for a little bit and get the little bit, ask for it all and then get somewhere hopefully in the middle because yeah, yeah, a summer of impact on our businesses and churches and everything else is not something that we're looking for, even though the outcome is going to be great.
It's going to be a ride for a couple of years.
It's not going to be pleasant for people, but we have to go through it. And as long as they know that we're trying to make it easier for them, I mean, we don't want to shut anybody down. I mean, we only have so many businesses in town and you know, we've got to try to do what we can do.
Johnny said he'll just keep them all open himself.
We'll take, we'll take care of it once that lottery ticket hits.
That lottery ticket.
Yeah.
That's a great point. Mr. Koivinen, thank you very much for bringing that up. And again, anything Alan that I can do or numbers, I'll call, I don't mind. I, I'm going to bother people a little bit, so I don't mind. Any further? Well, I think we have to make a motion first. Steph's looking at me like.
She's waiting. Also move.
Move by Koivinen, second.
Second.
Second, Rousey. Any further discussion on this? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We then move into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D, Point 05, subdivision 3B, attorney-client privilege.
So. Need somebody to make a motion on the second.
Can we have a motion to move to close?
So move.